I call to order the October 15th regular meeting of the county council. Please stand for the president of the county.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you comment on the agenda itself? All right, first order of business is 30 years of service resolution for Linda Linkel. Whereas Linda Linkel has served the Plymouth Township manager's office faithfully since October 3rd, 1994, and has therefore completed 30 years of service. And whereas Plymouth Township Council desires to formally recognize the diligent and valuable service rendered by Linda Linkel and publicly express its appreciation, now therefore be it resolved that Linda Linkel is congratulated for completion of 30 years of service with the Plymouth Township manager's office, and be it further resolved that this resolution be entered in the official minutes of Plymouth Township, and that a copy of this resolution be publicly tendered to Linda Linkel, adopted this 15th day of October 2024 by Plymouth Township Council. Congratulations. Linda, you've been awesome. You keep us up to date and remind us in between times and all time where we have to be in land. So, thank you, and always pleasantly. Thank you so much. Is there a vote? I'll make a motion that we adopt this resolution instead of second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Visio. Any comments from council?
My comments would just mirror yours, that Linda is amazing, responsive, goes above and beyond in everything she does, and always does it with a smile. Really appreciative.
Any other comments from council? From the audience? Our hearing now will take a roll call vote.
She's not a bad wife, either.
Well, that should go in the record. Absolutely, sir.
No, I'm one of the very few that answered an ad in the Times Herald for this position. For, I started part-time 32 years ago, and did it the old-fashioned way.
That's fabulous. Hooray for the Times Herald, it brought us Linda. Thank you, thank you both. All right, let's take a roll call vote, Ms. Visio.
In favor.
Mr. Whitney.
In favor.
Mr. Nelson.
In favor.
Ms. Leonard.
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Congratulations. Come on up. All right, and as always, before we continue with regular business, anyone who just came for the ceremony would like to leave, we'll give you time, but you're welcome to stay. All right, we have some announcements. An executive session was held on October 3rd, 2024, October 7th, 2024, and October 15th, 2024. We will have approval of the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the workshop and regular meetings?
移到
Motion by Mr. Whitney, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Leonard. Any comments on the minutes? Our hearing now will take a roll call vote, Mr. Whitney.
In favor.
Ms. Visio.
In favor.
Ms. Leonard.
In favor.
Mr. Nelson.
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Next item are announcements by Mr. Nelson.
I have a few announcements. First of all, I want to announce that the 2025 budget meetings will be held October 21st, October 28th, and November 18th at 6:00 PM. And my second announcement is that the December regular meeting is changed, is a change in time from 7:00 PM to 6:00 PM.
Thank you. Next, on the agenda for action, is our pension fund allocation, Ms. Visio.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I have a letter from our finance director, Callan Jarrett, noting that we've received a check for state pension aid in the amount of $968,899.51. Our actuary has directed that this check be allocated as follows: $505,716.51 to the police pension plan, and $463,183 to the non-uniformed pension plan. I would move that we approve the allocation of this check between these two plans.
Thank you, we have a motion by Ms. Visio, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nelson. Any comments from council or the audience? Hearing now, we'll take a roll call vote, Ms. Visio.
In favor.
Mr. Whitney.
In favor.
Mr. Nelson.
In favor.
Ms. Leonard.
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. We have an announcement by Ms. Leonard.
Just an announcement that the resident communication survey is still open until October 18th, and we invite residents to keep responding, well, to respond if you haven't already. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, for action, by Mr. Whitney.
I have a collection of change orders from Wind Gap in regards to the Plymouth Township Municipal Campus Project totaling $14,487.52. I would make a motion that we approve these change orders.
I thank you, we have a motion by Mr. Whitney, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nelson. Any comments or questions from council or from the audience? Our hearing now will take a roll call vote, Mr. Whitney.
In favor.
Mr. Nelson.
In favor.
Ms. Leonard.
In favor.
Ms. Visio.
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Next, for action, a resolution to be read by Mr. Whitney.
All right, a resolution of Plymouth Township, Montgomery County, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, supporting the Pennsylvania Commission for the United States Semi-Quintcentennial America 250 PA. Whereas the Pennsylvania Legislature and the governor created America 250 PA in 2018 to plan, encourage, develop, and coordinate the commemoration of the 250th anniversary of the United States and Pennsylvania's integral role in that event, and the role of its people on the nation's past, present, and future. And whereas America 250 PA hopes to engage all Pennsylvanians and all 67 counties through their many signature and officially recognized programs, projects, and events over the next several years by inspiring future leaders and celebrating all Pennsylvanians' contributions to the nation over the last 250 years. And whereas by adoption of America 250's four pillars of epic, we hope to educate, preserve, innovate, and celebrate. Now therefore be it resolved, and it hereby resolved, that Plymouth Township hereby endorses America 250 PA and their mission to educate, preserve, innovate, and celebrate every Pennsylvanian in every county. And it is further resolved that a copy of this resolution be sent to the Montgomery County Legislative Delegation and America 250 PA Commission, adopted this 15th day of October 2024. I would make a motion that we accept this resolution.
Motion by Mr. Whitney, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Visio. Any comments or questions from council or from the audience? Hearing now, we'll take a roll call vote, Mr. Whitney.
In favor.
Ms. Visio.
In favor.
Ms. Leonard.
In favor.
Mr. Nelson.
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Are there any other administrative items, Ms. Weiss? Thank you. All right, we will move on to police and public safety. Police pension contribution by Ms. Visio.
Thank you, Ms. Chair, I have a resolution for the police pension contribution. Whereas Chapter 19, Police Article 2 Pension Plan Division 1, Generally, Section 19-16 Definitions: Member Contributions, provides for the establishment, reduction, or elimination of the contribution rate as recommended by the actuary. Now therefore be it resolved that Plymouth Township Council does hereby establish the contribution rate for the year 2025 at 3%. Duly presented and adopted by Plymouth Township Council at a public meeting held on the 15th day of October 2024. I move that we adopt this resolution.
Motion by Ms. Visio, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Whitney. Any comments, questions from council or from the public? Hearing now, we will take a roll call vote, Ms. Visio.
In favor.
Mr. Whitney.
In favor.
Ms. Leonard.
In favor.
Mr. Nelson.
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. All right, our next item on the police and fire alarm ordinance is going to be tabled, as there's some items in it that need to be tweaked. So, next, by our solicitor and ordinance, final consideration, the parking of motor carriers. Mr. Glassman.
Yes, we have an amendment to Chapter 13, Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Article 2, Stopping, Standing, and Parking, specifically Section 13-17, in which the new Section 13-17 shall read, "Parking of commercial vehicles, motor carrier vehicles, trailers, et cetera, on streets prohibited." The parkings of commercial motor vehicles, motor carrier vehicles, tractors, trailers, house trailers, house coaches, motor homes, buses, and boats, in all those terms, as defined by the Pennsylvania Vehicle Code, is hereby prohibited on township-owned streets, except when loading or unloading. Ordained and enacted by the Council of the Township, Montgomery County, Pennsylvania, this 15th day of October 2024, and this is an update to deal with the current updates for the Pennsylvania Vehicle Code.
Thank you, Mr. Glassman. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
移到
Motion by Mr. Nelson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Visio. Any questions or comments from council or from the audience? Hearing now, we will take a roll call vote, Mr. Nelson.
In favor.
Ms. Leonard.
In favor.
Ms. Visio.
In favor.
Mr. Whitney.
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. All right, the next two items, the Plymouth Fire Company Loan Agreement and the Homenvale Fire Company Loan Agreement, are being tabled, while more details are worked out. Is there anything else, chief, from the police?
No, I have nothing, thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, next, we will move on to engineering. By Mr. Glassman, final consideration of our lighting ordinance.
Yes, we have an addition of Chapter 25 dealing with exterior lighting, and this is a new addition to the township ordinance. And the purpose of this is, this section is to improve the safety, travel conditions, and general welfare of the residents by the following methods of lighting design. One, control of direct glare from lighting fixtures. Two, reduction of spill light onto adjacent properties. Three, reduction of light pollution. Four, selection of lighting fixtures that accomplish the above. Five, promote lighting designs that provide the required security but do not cause a nuisance to neighbors or the traveling public. This ordinance, the new Chapter 25, provides for a definition section, provides a section on luminaries and lamps, provides a section dealing with light trespass or spill light, deals with lighting level guidelines, lighting controls, and plan submission. So, when new property owners or new developers are coming up with plans, they will have to provide a lighting plan to be reviewed by the township's consultant before approval is given.
Thank you, Mr. Glassman. Is there a motion to adopt the lighting ordinance?
移到
Motion by Mr. Nelson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Whitney. Any comments or questions from council or from the audience? Our hearing now will take a roll call vote, Mr. Nelson.
In favor.
Ms. Leonard.
Favor.
Ms. Visio.
In favor.
Mr. Whitney.
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Anything else from engineering tonight?
Nothing.
Thank you. All right, moving down to subdivision and land development, Ms. Visio.
Thank you, I have a letter from Tom Ludgate dated 10/2/24 regarding a grant of extension of time in which we can consider and act on subdivision or land development plans. This is related to St. George Coptic Orthodox Church on 2907 Jolly Road. The current plan action deadline is October 20th, 2024, and the new plan action deadline would be January 20th, 2025. I move that we accept this extension.
Motion by Ms. Visio, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Whitney. Any comments or questions from council or the public? Hearing now, we'll take a roll call vote, Ms. Visio.
In favor.
Mr. Whitney.
In favor.
Mr. Nelson.
In favor.
Ms. Leonard.
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. All right, and projects under construction and escrow release, Mr. Whitney.
I have a letter here from Lonnie Manai of Woodruff &amp; Associates in regards to Black Horse Woods on Fairfield Road in Plymouth Township. At this time, based on field observations of work completed to date, they find that sufficient work has been completed to release the amount of $33,482.40. By releasing this amount, the total account balance for the project will be reduced to I would make a motion that we approve this escrow release.
Thank you, there's a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Visio. Any comments or questions from council or from the public? Hearing now, we'll take a roll call vote, Mr. Whitney.
In favor.
Ms. Visio.
In favor.
Ms. Leonard.
In favor.
Mr. Nelson.
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. All right, a reading of our upcoming zoning hearings by Mr. Nelson.
So, the zoning hearing board of Plymouth Township will hold a public hearing on Monday, October 21st, commencing at 7:00 PM in this building. The following applications will be heard, there are three. One by Robert Gervasi Jr. on an application for variance from Plymouth Township Zoning Ordinance Number 342, as amended Article 7, Section 702(c)(1). They are requesting to have a four-foot setback where 16 feet is required. The property is located at 108 Kirk Street in a C residential zoning district. The next application is from Kyle Farnholz and Erica Reske. The application is for a variance from Section 1909.E. They are requesting to allow a six-foot fence be installed within the front yard setback. The end of the fence will be around about 78 feet back from Woodbrook Lane and Chelsea Road intersection, and they are adding a six-foot wood shadow box fence around the backyard. The property is located at 811 Woodbrook Lane in a B residential zoning district. And the final application is from Patrick and Lisa Delaney on an application for variances from Plymouth Township Zoning Ordinance Number 342, Article 25, Section 2500(a), and Article 17, Section 1700. They are requesting to permit the use of a dance school in the campus industrial district, and to the extent required, a variance to permits 58 off-street parking spaces. The property is located at 540 Township Line Road in a campus industrial zoning district. Any citizen of Plymouth Township or interested party may attend the public hearing and have an opportunity to be heard.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Moving on to upcoming events by our Parks and Recreation Department. The Harriet Wetherell Park Campfire and Hayride will be Saturday, October 19th. There will be a pool event, the Pool Pumpkin Patch, on Sunday, October 20th. Picklepalooza, I don't know what that is, will be Saturday, October 26th. It is a new event. Our Veterans Day Celebration will be Wednesday, November 6th, and I encourage everybody to come. It will be at our Service and Devotion Monument at the corner of Germantown and Walton Roads. That's a daytime event. The Outdoor Vendor Market for the holiday season will be Saturday, November 16th. That will be held at the Colonial Middle School, and they're still looking for vendors. The Holiday Tree Lighting Ceremony will be Wednesday, December 4th. Santa will be there, lots of snacks and crafts for children, and that is also at the corner of Walton Road and Germantown Pike. There will be a bus trip to New York City with the opportunity to go to Radio City Music Hall, or just to be on your own for the day, and that will be on Friday, December 6th. That's a program that is returning. The Graham Cracker House Workshop will be Saturday, December 7th. Breakfast with Santa will be Saturday, December 14th. A senior holiday potluck and trivia contest will be Monday, December 16th. And as always, we are looking for false sponsors for our upcoming events. Next, by Ms. Visio, a records disposition resolution.
Thank you, looks like we've been doing some good housekeeping and housecleaning. This is a records disposition resolution resolved by the Council of Plymouth Township, Montgomery County, Pennsylvania. Whereas by virtue of Resolution Number 1991-53, adopted November 11th, 1991, Plymouth Township declared its intent to follow the procedures for the disposition of records as set forth in the Municipal Records Manual of Pennsylvania, approved December 16th, 2008. And whereas in accordance with Act 428 of 1968, each individual act of disposition shall be approved by resolution of the governing body of the municipality. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of Plymouth Township, Montgomery County, Pennsylvania, in accordance with the above cited Municipal Records Manual, hereby authorizes the disposition of the following public records. Parks and Recreation Department Activity Reports, Records, and Program Reports. Building and Grounds Department Activity Reports, Records, and Program Reports, for a total of 103 boxes, adopted this 15th day of October 2024. I make a motion that we accept this resolution.
Motion by Ms. Visio, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Whitney. Any comments or questions from council or from the public? Hearing now, we'll take a roll call vote, Ms. Visio.
In favor.
Mr. Whitney.
In favor.
Ms. Leonard.
In favor.
Mr. Nelson.
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. And I apologize, Kristin, I read your next two announcements, but everyone needs to be reminded, they were on my list. It's okay. Go ahead, remind everybody, because these are really big ones coming up.
Oh, well, first is the Citizen Board vacancy announcement, though, right?
Oops, yes, sorry.
Okay, it's okay. All residents wishing to serve on these Citizen Boards are asked to submit their resume or a letter stating their interest to the Township Manager at 700 Belvar Road, Plymouth Meeting, PA 19462, or via email to kweiss@plimmitt township.org. The following Citizen Board positions are currently open. Property Maintenance Code Appeals Board has three positions open. Historical Architecture Review Board, one position open. And the Human Relations Commission, one position open.
Thank you. Moving on to updates of ongoing projects in Cuny Town. Quite extensive, so I'm going to read, so I don't leave out any details. First, I want to thank everybody for coming out this evening. Moving forward, we have decided as a council to have a Cuny Town update at every regular meeting, which is the second meeting of the month. The goal of the monthly update is to provide the public with information about what has occurred over the past month and what is going to occur over the next month. We hope that by providing these updates monthly, there will not be as many questions sent to PENDOT directly. As PENDOT has unfortunately notified our consultants that every time they have to answer the questions, it takes away from their review of the projects and slows down the process of having the projects reviewed. While council has been discussing Cuny Town over the last year, we have engaged our professional engineers, both our regular engineering firm and our traffic consulting firm, to explore three separate projects. Those three projects are: the guide rail near 536 Elm Street; two, a sidewalk on West Elm Street; and three, a New Elm and Light Street intersection pedestrian crossing. And I'm now going to provide updates on each of those. On the guide rail, the township engineers collected data and investigated the feasibility of installing a guide rail just south of the Interstate 476 underpass near the residence at 536 New Elm Street. The engineer prepared a memo on June 3rd, 2024, that quantified the existing conditions and included a survey of the embankment adjacent to 536 Elm Street. The memo also presented the crash history of that area, as well as volume and speed data. The township engineer and township officials have also met with the PENDOT Guide Rail Supervisor and Safety Supervisor to discuss the township's safety concerns in this area. PENDOT had installed a chain-link fence in that area as a safety measure to combat this type of issue, but it is the township's position that a stronger barrier is needed, due to concern that someday there could be a fatality to persons inside that area. The topographical survey that was taken measured the embankment between the overpass and the residence. That embankment is 215.41 feet, with an average slope of 9.25%, and a maximum slope of 19.31%. That embankment height is 19.92 feet. A vehicle leaving the roadway, if it avoids hitting the residence, could plummet down this steep embankment. PENDOT, in the past, worked with the township to provide mitigation measures to discourage speeding on that road, including signage to alert drivers to the curving roadway and advising slow speed. The engineer's report concluded that a guide rail is the best solution to protect local people and residences in this area. The engineer has submitted their report to PENDOT. The PENDOT D6 Guide Rail Supervisor is currently reviewing the information provided to decide the suitability of installing a guide rail. Council will update residents monthly on the progress of this guide rail request. Next, on the sidewalk. First, I want to present a little bit of history on the Blue Route. The Federal Highway Commission made the decision to construct a cross-county highway way back in 1958 with three possibilities under consideration. The current location that was chosen is the Blue Route that cuts through Cuny Town, and it was completed in 1990. The local road that passes under the Blue Route, Elm Street to New Elm Street, is a state road controlled by PENDOT. All but three properties on Old Elm, Fulton, and Light Streets were purchased prior to construction of the Blue Route overpass across West Elm Street. Some residents have requested a sidewalk to connect the two sides of Cuny Town that were bisected by the Blue Route 34 years ago. The engineering assessment included multiple site visits to assess the terrain and physical environment, as well as researching the rights of way and private property ownership. The engineer made the following assessments. On the north side, one, the need to protect whatever parking may be available to the neighborhood is a critical component of consideration. Two, easements and construction of public improvements on private property further exacerbate this opportunity. On the south side, one, the need to negotiate an easement with the Steel Company cannot be diminished. Two, the safety concerns regarding the conflict between heavy truck traffic at the Steel Company driveway versus pedestrians crossing a very wide and uncontrolled driveway cannot be minimized. Three, the need for a very significant retaining wall running the full length of construction between the Steel Company driveway and a potential Old Elm Street crossing creates an insurmountable hurdle. Four, the need for additional guide rail further Four, the need for additional guide rail further exacerbates both engineering cost and safety concerns. Next in their report, the proximity to heavy traffic with corresponding safety concerns does not suggest this area to be a candidate for traditional sidewalks. The engineer concluded that there is no fiscally nor physically responsible way to make a pedestrian connection along West Elm Street that is both safe and convenient to our neighbors. In addition to the engineering assessment, various township officials have visited the area, including the township manager, most members of council, and several police officers. All decisions by council must be made in a manner that ensures the health, safety, and welfare of the residents. There was a resident who was in contact with Cliffs, the Steel Company, and she noted that the Steel Company shares the safety concerns that a sidewalk crossing their truck driveway creates a liability for them. In assessing any residents' requests, the township is required to spend township money in a fiscally responsible manner. The township's five-year capital improvement plan will require approximately $15 million for necessary projects that impact the entire township. This includes $4.3 million for the sewer improvement known as the Plymouth Intercepter Phase III, which runs behind the Metroplex. $4 million to build a firehouse on Germantown Pike that can house the current fleet of trucks and provide sleeping quarters for the overnight firefighters. $2.5 million repair of the pump room at the community center. These expenditures, which are necessary for the safety and health of the entire township, further mitigate against a sidewalk. The township has spent more than $56,000 on engineering fees, applications, and permits for the three Cuny Town projects. The estimated engineering and construction cost for a sidewalk would be approximately $1 million. This does not include the legal fees incurred to date and into the future, nor the cost of eminent domain or easements of Steel Company property. In conclusion, council is not moving forward with a sidewalk on West Elm Street. It is the opinion of our engineers that a sidewalk on West Elm Street cannot be constructed safely, especially considering the traffic coming and going from the steel plant on the south side of West Elm Street. On the north side, any sidewalk construction would lead to reduced available parking spots, something that the community is against. Further with regard to the south side, the construction alone, due to the grade and the retaining wall, as I said, is estimated to cost more than $1 million, and that does not include any future engineering, legal cost, or eminent domain. While we do not take this decision lightly, we trust our experts and have already authorized them to consider to spend a significant amount of time exploring this option. And the final update on the crosswalk, and that would be at New Elm and Light Street intersection, which has a... Which residents use, it also has a bus stop for children. In October, 2023, the township and PennDOT officials met on site to discuss installing a crosswalk at New Elm and Light Streets. Since that date a year ago, there have been engineering surveys, traffic studies, and applications to PennDOT. Right-of-entry letters and forms have been sent already to affected property owners. The right-of-entry acts as a temporary easement to permit construction of curb cuts and electrical work for the crosswalk. And one right-of-entry is for a permanent easement of several square feet to level the sidewalk for the ADA ramp. An easement is the right to make limited use of another person's land, such as a right-of-way. PennDOT will issue a highway occupancy permit when all of the right-of-entry forms are signed and returned. The next step after that will be putting construction out to bid. The crosswalk improvements will include ADA curb ramps and a painted crosswalk for pedestrians. The improvements will also include a rectangular, rapid-flashing beacon for pedestrians crossing Elm Street at Light Street. These flashing lights will be push-button activated, and drivers will be required by law to yield to pedestrians in the crosswalk. Council will provide monthly updates on this crosswalk at the regular meetings. And due to our current low temperatures, it's anticipated the actual painting of the crosswalk stripes will occur in spring 2025, but we will keep you updated on all of those upcoming requirements. Are there any comments from members of council on the updates for the Cuny Town three projects?
Karen, to be clear, so you're saying we're just for the public, we're moving forward with the crosswalk?
We're moving forward with the crosswalk, and we are moving forward, monitoring, and hopefully getting permission from PennDOT on the guide rail in the area of 536 New Elm Street. Right. Any other comments from any members of council?
Thank you. I just wanted to add that we are committed to increasing and enhancing our communication about these projects, knowing that there are two projects still in the works, and knowing that folks are eager to get updates, that we have committed to put those every month on our agenda, as Karen has mentioned. So it will be easier to find frequent, timely, accurate information from the source on a monthly basis.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. And now, audience participation on any of the items that have been discussed or just anything that's on your mind. Please come up to this table, and if that green light is not on the microphone, would you mind pressing it? Oh, great. And could you just give us your name and whether you live in Plymouth Township?
I am Anthony Leacy. I live in Plymouth Township on Old Elm... Fulton Street. Two things. One question, the guard rail, the guide rail, is that going to be on the side away from the road? Or is it going to be next to the curb?
Guide rail, you know where the underpass is, and you're headed toward Conshohocken. Right after that underpass, on the right-hand side, which is the south side, the same side as the Steel Company.
Yeah.
There's a house.
Yep.
Very close to the road. And that's the area from the underpass and where that house is that a guide rail is contemplated.
But is it going to be blocking pedestrians from walking on that side of the road, or is it going to be? No, I know it's going to be on the south side, but is it going to be on the curb?
Closer to the house rather than closer to the street.
No. If you're on the road, right, there's the curb, and then the embankment, and then there's a flat spot where there used to be a sidewalk.
Right.
Is it going to be on the curb in the road? Or is it going to be on the other side?
You know where the speeding car left the road and landed on the fence? It's going to be in that area.
So is that... Is that... Is there plans to prevent that from blocking pedestrians from walking? Because if we're not going to have a sidewalk, and that guide rail comes up, and you block the pedestrians there, that makes it even harder for pedestrians to walk under the bridge.
I am not positive about that, and that will be some information that I will provide at our next monthly update. I'll get in touch with the engineers to find out precisely where that is going and where on the road versus the house. We have to protect that house. That house comes very close to the road. Family with small children lives there.
Right.
I understand in the years ago, well, I mean, not that long ago, cars have actually crashed into that house. The most recent event that I'm aware of, back in December, was a car that was going so fast, he landed on the fence. So I will find out where in the drawings that guide rail is expected to go. And I'll have that update for you next month. And if you can't make it next month, all of these meetings are recorded, and so the next day you can access the recording online.
Yeah, because I have a two-year-old, and if it blocks that, the only way to get across under the bridge without going into traffic, that's going to affect everyone, all the kids in my neighborhood, to walk across and go to, you know, downtown, or the, you know, any... Anything on the other side of town. And then, in addition to that, DeKalb Pike just put in... Just put in speed bumps. Norristown on DeKalb Pike just put in speed bumps. And previously, we were told that because that's a PennDOT road, that speed bumps were not allowed. So obviously, that's not the case, because it's... DeKalb Pike is in the same situation that Elm Street is on.
Is DeKalb Pike a state road?
That's 202.
Okay. So, I, you know, it's a state road? And, you know, whether speed bumps would be advisable there, I don't know. And I don't know what PennDOT...
Anything to slow down the traffic is going to help. If we're not going to get a sidewalk, we need something to physically slow down the traffic, because signs flashing everywhere just confuses people, and they won't know where to look. And while they're speeding, they're not going to pay attention, no matter what the crosswalk shows. I mean, look at Fulton Street. Look at all those lights flashing in Fulton... Or not Fulton, Fayette Street. All those lights on Fayette Street, people that aren't used to it don't know where to look. Like, one, you have too many signs. It's not safe anymore, which is why they're looking at... I'm thinking, which is why they're looking at a road diet. And I think something similar on Elm Street would help. We just physically need to slow people down, whether that's rumble strips, which would not slow down ambulances, or speed bumps, where ambulances can go over, you know, narrow enough to where ambulance can go over, but normal cars have to slow down. Because something... If a sidewalk's not going to happen, something needs to happen to physically slow down the traffic, because the police officers that do a great job watching it, they cannot be watching that road 24/7. And I can't tell you how many times on that stop sign from Old Elm Street and Elm Street, people just blow by the stop signs. And I'm very lucky that my car hasn't been hit yet.
Okay, thank you. And just to remind you, our engineer determined that pedestrians walking along there and crossing that driveway at Cliff Steel is not safe.
But if you don't do anything, it's even not... It's more not safe. People are going to walk there anyway.
Yeah.
And it's... We're talking about a couple hundred feet. I mean, we have to be realistic about this. Like, there's got to be other ways around. And if cars park parallel, where you're saying they would lose the parking, if they park parallel, you would only lose a small percentage of parking, and you could still put a narrow sidewalk in. The sidewalk doesn't have to be 20 feet wide. I mean, if it's four feet wide, like, there's got to be a way around it to where something you can do to prevent, especially children, walking on their own. I mean, what's the point?
Not safe.
Yeah. What's the point of having a park in Allenwood when you're basically asking for children to get hit? Are we waiting for that to happen before we make action? Or are we actually going to prioritize safety? And not the dollars?
The safest way to travel that road is in a vehicle and not a pedestrian. And there are areas in our... I live on Butler Pike with no sidewalk and no shoulder, no way to walk.
But the difference is, there used to be a sidewalk there, and PennDOT got rid of that sidewalk. Is there any way we could sue them to get it back?
I doubt that, but that sidewalk, I don't know when it was in existence, but I can tell you that for the past 34 years, there has not been. And perhaps, back in the day, when people lived in Cuny Town and worked in the steel mill and other industrial areas, and not everybody had, you know, vehicles or two vehicles, and they would walk to work, maybe. But I have no information on a sidewalk, having been along that road.
I mean, you could see the existence of the sidewalk, so it's not a matter of, was it there? It was there. It's just a matter of when it was there. And it's got to be from the highway, because otherwise it would have still been there. And if PennDOT is not going to put a sidewalk, or we're not going to put a sidewalk in, PennDOT needs to at least maintain the vegetation that they only do once a year, maybe. I've taken my weed whipper out there and cut a line under all the brush, so at least there's some part that you don't have to walk on the road with.
Okay, we can look into PennDOT's obligation to maintain the vegetation in that area.
Okay.
Thank you.
And on top, just one last thing. On top of that, the bridge that goes over Plymouth Creek, I know that's in Conshohocken's district, but every winter, nobody maintains the snow on that road. So, I don't... That's...
That's Conshohocken Borough?
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
So PennDOT is completely ignoring the responsibility to maintain that road.
And we'll look into the vegetation maintenance.
Okay.
All right, and we'll have an update on that for you as well.
Okay.
Next month. Thank you. Comment from anybody else? Come up and give us your name and... Where do you live in Plymouth Township?
Hi.
Hi, Joanna.
My name's Joanna Barr. I am a resident of Plymouth Township. I actually live on New Elm Street. And I have almost hit pedestrians pulling out. I have to park across the street. It's for people who don't have driveways. Apparently, like, 40 years ago, when they built the bike path, there was a road there, and people had driveways going up their backyards and garages and everything, and all that was torn down. So then they created this space that's not big enough for the people that don't have driveways. But I... I'll back out, and the sensors on the car don't see people walking behind the next car. Like, it's... I've slammed on my brakes many times when, you know, all of a sudden, there's a pedestrian there. So it scares the bejesus out of me. But we can't put it... I understand that we cannot put a sidewalk there, because we can't park parallel. There's not even enough space to park, you know, horizontal. Anyway, I have two questions. Well, one question. We had requested two handicap spaces. One for the van that parks on the end. She does park parallel. And then one for my vehicle. And I'm wondering what is going on with that.
Okay. Is that private property, those parkings?
No. It was when the house went... When that property...
This is across from your house. I've parked there before. It's dangerous.
No, because I know. When the house went up for sale, like, five or six years ago, the people that owned that house used to decide who can park and who can't. Like, they told me I wasn't allowed to park there anymore because these kids that were living with us had an argument in the middle of the street one night. And like, anyway, so one of the other neighbors, as soon as it went up for sale, had it assessed. Their property ends at the garden, at the little wall where the garden is. That's it. And then up, that's theirs. So PennDOT owns or is responsible for that, the parking area.
Okay. We'll look into that, because we need to know the ownership of that. And once we know the ownership of those parking spaces on the north side, then we can look into whether or not handicap... Two handicap spots can be put there. But I don't know the property. I mean, I would like to know definitively the ownership of that. Like, are we talking about PennDOT, or are we talking... You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Before we, before we, as a township, can do anything or approach anybody, we need to know that. So we will determine that and include that in our update.
Okay. And what the previous gentleman mentioned, the... I did drive down DeKalb the other day, and there were speed bumps. And I... My jaw dropped, because I was the one who had a petition going about six or seven years ago to get speed bumps in. Every person living on New Elm Street signed it. And I submitted... And I submitted it to the township manager here, and she returned it saying, um, uh, it needs to go to PennDOT. And I found the right person. And it, and then they contacted me, uh, and they said, "We never put speed bumps in residential streets." Well, that's not, no longer the case. So I think that's something that we can approach. There's no longer "never."
Yeah. So where on DeKalb Street are these speed bumps?
They're like, from the, uh, it's where the kids cross the street to go to the, either to the middle school or to the elementary school. So, uh, it's like between, um, like Brown and, um... Is it Freely?
If you go up for a dance, you take a right where the old hospital used to be, it's like two blocks down.
Yeah.
That is, that is north.
Yeah, Brown, I'm sure like Logan.
But they're not your normal speed bumps that go this way.
No.
Right, they're like this.
Yeah.
Anytime you can still drive over, like, this young man, a small car would do it. But a bigger truck or an ambulance, you just, you split the difference, don't drive over. So they are there, and they're new. We just saw them the other day.
They must have just put them in, because-
And it's at a elementary and middle school?
Well, that's where, I'm, my guess is, because, and, and they have crossing guards at Brown, um, I think. Brown and, and DeKalb, um...
Yeah, it's from Brown to Logan.
Yeah.
Okay, I don't know the history of putting speed bumps on DeKalb Street in North-
Yeah, but they literally told me, "We never do." And they cannot say that anymore, so. And if they're not going to put in a sidewalk, um, I, I think speed bumps are probably a less expensive option and, and more practical.
Something to consider. Thank you, Ms. Bah.
Okay, I had one, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead, sure.
No. Uh, the guardrail going in, can it expand, extend, um, under the overpass? So that people can walk behind it?
I don't know the, as I said earlier, I don't know the plan that was already submitted and where exactly the guide rail's going. But the purpose of it was to protect that house-
Yeah.
-at 536 Elm Street, because there are people living in it. And it goes, the house has a extension on the front that goes very close to the road. So I don't know about guide rails under overpasses. Again, we, you know, our engineer has concluded that it is not safe to walk on the south side of that street. And one of the key dangers is crossing that uncontrolled, very wide driveway. That's a truck entrance. These are trucks going into a steel company. So it, I, maybe children do it, maybe people do it, and maybe they let their children do it. It is not a safe thing to do. I mean, that's what our engineer concluded. And I've been out there several times, and so I'm, I'm well familiar with what that looks like.
Yeah. I mean, kids from our side go to the park to play basketball. And that's, and they, that's, your parents aren't going to drive you two blocks to the park. I mean, that's just, um...
Yeah. When they decided to cut Cuny Town in half, but that was 34 years ago and-
Yep. Okay, well, thank you. And I want to acknowledge, um, someone got them to reduce the speed from, to 25 miles an hour coming into the intersection, um, was that Old Elm and Conshohocken Road? Whatever that is, that three-point intersection at the steel mill. Someone got them to reduce the speed there, and I just want to appreciate, acknowledge that.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. Nick Learman, Plymouth resident. So as the gentleman back here, I'm also, uh, we've all met before, but I'm also the father of three children. Uh, I have an eight-year-old, an almost-two-year-old, and a, excuse me, almost-three-year-old, and a one-year-old. And Ms. Bramble, with all due respect, as much as I appreciate the fact that this is, the Blue Roots been there for 35 years, the reality is that the demographics of our neighborhood and our community are growing. And what you want are people like us, who pay their taxes, who bring their families here, who want to grow their families here in Plymouth. So this idea and the tenor of the responses that we've gotten through this process and that we continue to get tonight, that somehow, well, that's the way it was 40 years ago? That's, answer's not only not helpful, it's disrespectful. And it does not communicate that this council is in any way engaged in trying to advocate to try to get something in place. I understand that the guardrail, the guide rail, and the crosswalk are farther down this path. Perhaps, had this been addressed eight months ago, and the engineering study had been provided eight months ago, when this was first requested, in February of '24, then perhaps those projects would not be disconnected, and we could have evaluated this in a proper way and perhaps tied them all together more coherently. Perhaps that can still happen, I don't know. But the reality is that the optics are pretty clear that, for whatever reason, whether it's financial or disinterest, or because they, somehow you feel like Cuny Town is asking for more than we're entitled to, as drag, this engineering study was certainly not ready all of a sudden in the last week or two. Uh, I find that disingenuous. More importantly, in the email traffic you provided to me, Ms. Bramble, when I asked for an update for the sixth time, was that you would not provide me the results so that it could be discussed at this evening's meeting. And in fact, it's not being discussed. What's being happened is you're drawing conclusory statements, engineer, who, after eight months of it getting slow rolled, now says, "No, it's impossible for it to happen. It's absolutely not feasible." Magically, he comes to these conclusory statements with nothing to support it. So for instance, well, one, are, are we able to see the engineering study?
I think someone's put in a, a right-to-know request, and everything will be-
Well, I'm not asking for a right-to-know request. I understand the legal formalities. What I'm asking is, why wouldn't we just turn that over voluntarily as the council?
Well-
That's two, those are two entirely different processes. There's nothing that stops the council from voluntarily saying, "Here's the engineering study that we are now relying on," that now council president is sitting here in front of us saying, "No, well, the engineer says it's impossible and it's fiscally irresponsible." Well, let me, give you an example of why I find that so hard to believe, and that you've cited multiple times. This idea that somehow, you said, quote, "There are..." It cannot, the safety and the trucks leaving that driveway cannot be minimized. That's insanity. The, I, this idea that it cannot be minimized? And what that speaks to is, it speaks to this entire process where the answer was already decided eight months ago in the hopes that the people in this room are going to go away. But we're still here. And so I'm asking for the council to not wait for a right-to-know request. We don't, it doesn't need to go to lawyers, it doesn't need to be looked, just turn over the engineering study so we can see exactly the mitigation techniques that the engineering, that the engineer took into consideration. Because this idea that you can't put a stop sign, or a gate, or a speed bump, or any number of things to, so that traffic coming out of there knows that it's coming in and out. "Oh, by the way, I live there." It's not that high traffic. There's more trucks coming down Light Street from that parking garage north of Elm, or that parking lot north of Elm, flying down Light Street every morning than there are out of Cliffs. So this idea that it cannot be mitigated is not true. And it will, I, we will not sit there and simply say, "Oh, well, okay." Further, we've, this process, clearly this community is invested in this because there have been people showing up to this meeting, month after month after month. And the tenor and the tone of my voice has been elevated again and again because we're clearly invested and clearly frustrated. Instead, council showed up tonight and said, "Well, sorry, engineer says it can't be done, can't be done. Throw my hands up, it's over." And what we've asked over and over again through this process, because we could read the tea leaves, we knew what the answer was going to be before you delivered it, was for a solution. So that's when we start talking about a guardrail. Is that feasible? Can that be done? What's that going to cost? Why isn't that discussion already being had? Why are we not going to the engineer and saying, "Okay, well, you've been out there, you're the pro. How do we get this done? Here's the concern. There are tons of people and their children trying to get to the Schuylkill River Trail, trying to get into downtown Conshohocken, trying to get from Conshohocken to the businesses that are up on, uh, farther up on Elm and Conshohocken Road. What are we going to do to make them safe?" But we're not hearing any of that. And it speaks, it feels, and you can, I can't read your minds, I, I, I don't know. I can't, I don't live inside your heads, but it feels like you just don't care. And it feels like you think you can wait out some angry residents who are going to get bought, logged down with their kids and their jobs and everything else, and just hope that we go away. So what I'm asking is, I think, uh, one really solid show of good faith would be to turn over the engineering study and to do it immediately, now, tonight, tomorrow? There's nothing, I don't know what you could possibly want to hide with that, so that we can discuss it, and then we can get through, "Okay, no, hey, here's another solution."
Right, there is a process established by law for the township to provide documents to residents. Our solicitor, in the past, and I believe he wrote to, uh, some, the person who did request, who did do a right-to-know, why it needs to be done by the right-to-know process. Because of doc-
Yeah, and, oh, by the way, let's not, I, I, I understand a little bit about this. I'm not a civics expert, but I do understand that the right-to-know process is for a citizen to demand transparency from their government. Trek, got it. I'm not talking, I'm hoping, and what I'm asking for the council, is that you say, "Hey, it doesn't need to be demanded. We understand that we're supposed to be working with you, good citizens, as representing you and advocating for you. Here you go. Here is our homework. Here's proof that we're doing that." And instead, what we've gotten is you reading three lines that you've cho- chosen out of this report that none of us have seen. That can't possibly be protected by any sort of, uh, legal protections.
Most of what I read came from the engineering study. Our solicitor has already advised in an email to a resident who filed a right-to-know, why the right-to-know, uh, process needs to be done, the paper trail.
No, would he advise, I've seen the email, the email traffic. Would he advise them what the right-to-know process is? What I'm telling you is, you know that we are interested in this. You know that we're going to care. You know we're going to ask questions. Why wouldn't you, whatever that process is, why don't you go through the process before you showed up tonight? Or why don't you just turn it over? Why, why are we hiding the ball? Why have we been dragging our feet for eight months? Mr. Glassman, it looks like you have something you want to say.
Go ahead. Mr. Glassman's our solicitor.
Was it going to say anything else at this time? Was it saying anything else? If you submit a right-to-know request, you will be able to receive a copy of the report. The township has a, a process to request all documents. That's the purpose of the right-to-know law, is to receive records responsive. In another right-to-know request on this issue, there was a voluminous emails that were attached to that, which needed legal extension for review. But that was why that took a 30-day legal extension. You've obviously seen that email that we're, Ms. Bramble was referring to. But if you're just looking for the report, if you submit a right-to-know request, it will be processed as the township processes all other right-to-know requests.
All right, so there's two things. One, the right-to-know request, there was an additional follow-on question because it was not disclosed to us about the engineering study until the last two weeks. And I'm not sure that that was encompassed in the initial right-to-know. And that follow-on request was made and not responded to. But again, Mr. Glassman, I'll ask you as, as the township solicitor, what legal prohibition is there from the council from turning over the report?
Township has a process so that they-
That's not the, no, I'm not asking about the process. I'm like, what is the prohibition by law? By statute, by ordinance, by policy that says, "No, council must not turn this over. It must go through the right-to-know request."
Have the option to file a right-to-know request for documents that you are requesting.
Yeah, and the fact that you refuse to answer my question answers my question. There is no legal prohibition. Instead, council is choosing not to turn over the engineering report, for God knows what reason.
It will be turned over to every person who files a right-to-know or the one person who has a fi- who has filed the right-to-know is free to distribute it to as many people as she wishes. We are not hiding it. We are being transparent. We have expended a considerable amount of money already on the three projects in Cuny Town. We rely on our experts, as I said. These are engineering experts. And when they tell us that it is not feasible, not safe, not fiscally responsible because of the many factors that I went through, and I pulled all of that information out of the engineering reports, for those reasons, it is our responsibility in ensuring the health, safety, and welfare of the township as a whole, as well as every resident in our township. We must ensure that. It is not safe, and it would not be responsible for us, of us, to try to continue to pursue something that our engineering experts have deemed to be unsafe. And we are also in ensuring the welfare of the entire township. We do have to be mindful of how we spend township money. Now, we are spending, we've already spent township money on that engineering study. We will be spending considerable amount of money in addition on the crosswalk, because that is something that will keep the children at that bus stop and the residents crossing back and forth safe. But we have other capital projects that impact the entire township. We must build the Plymouth Interceptor Phase III sewer project. That is absolutely necessary for the growing township to handle the waste. That's a $4.3 million project.
Okay.
We-
No, ma'am, no, and with all due respect, no one's arguing that there aren't other imperative spending requirements. I also know the budget of the Plymouth Township is something in the order of 40 mil, you know, $25 million or $40 million a year. So let's not pretend that you can't do two things at the same time. And so what I, but I want to make it crystal clear, because I feel like you haven't answered the question directly. And so it's crystal clear for the video, for everybody in this room. Will you turn over the engineering report without a right-to-know request?
We will follow the township process as we do for every document request. We are not hiding it. We are being transparent with it. Most of what I read tonight came from the engineering study. So you pretty much, if you listen to what I said when you replay the video, came from the engineering report. We will-
What is the process to, to see the report where it says that it cannot be turned over without a right-to-know request?
We are going to follow township process as we do with every document request. We're not hiding it. It is available, and I'm sure it will be available shortly to the woman who requested it, and I'm sure she'll share it with you. You were on the email thread, so you know who she is.
Okay, well, we look forward to further discussions, and hopefully township will do, take steps to advocate and protect the men, women, and children of Cuny Town.
Thank you. Comments from anybody else, please?
Hi, Patty Smith, Plymouth Township, Fulton Street. So I do want to thank you. I think the monthly updates are very beneficial for everyone involved. I think it's a step in the right direction. Um, it seems as if PennDOT maybe, you know, communicated, you told us to go to PennDOT, right? And like, I think we overwhelmed them, and then they maybe told you, yeah, so-
They told us to stop.
Yeah, they told you to stop, so, um, but, um, so thank you for that. I, um, I just wanted to reiterate, like, we'll ask the question. I didn't get an answer on email, but do I need to amend the RTK request in order to encompass the dates of the feasibility study? Because I submitted it on the 20th. Okay, so I don't need to?
No. Because you asked for everything.
Yes, but I asked for it from, you know, like, a year ago to present. So I didn't know if there was going to be a loophole where I can't, you know, get it.
We're just going to give you everything we have-
Okay.
That's up to date.
Okay. I also wanted to extend a thank you to everyone here in the room behind me, uh, from Conneton, who, uh, is here today. Thank you for, uh, trimming the grass, too. I didn't know it was you. It's helpful. But, um, I think in another email before this, I reiterated that we, like, need solutions. And yet again tonight, I think at least for the sidewalk, um, that has just been a blocker, whether you're citing it's irresponsible. Safety-wise, um, which is really strange to me, because on the one hand, you're prioritizing private property, a house, and putting a guardrail in, but you are not prioritizing the pedestrians, the lives of the pedestrians. And that's something that stands out to me, is that the, we need to protect the house, we need to protect the house. And we need to protect people's private cars from flying off the embankment. But I still haven't heard anything about protecting the pedestrians. It seems as if you're just trying to, um, basically tell us, "Well, no, it's not safe." it seems as if you're just trying to, um, basically tell us, well, no, it's not safe, and we're not liable for it if anything happens, because we told you it wasn't safe. And I know that may be not what you're intending, but that is what it's coming across as, and it still sounds like we haven't gotten to a solution, um, I think the, the speed bumps would be amazing if that's possible, um, it, but I think the other major blocker that you're talking about is a financial problem, um, so I do have a couple of questions as it relates to the finances, uh, for Plymouth Township, um, so my first question is, do you have a grant writer? So you do have a grant writer, so, okay.
Okay, so now, yeah, so come back to me now, thank, thank you, Ms. Wise.
Can I ask any further questions about the grants?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay.
But just direct the questions to me, I, I, I just don't want you going directly to Ms. Wise, I, I just want to keep things...
Because she is the township manager, which is traditionally responsible for financial management as well as grant writing.
Yeah, so we have a grant writer.
Yeah, okay, so you have a grant writer, um, and when is the, how many, like, grants did you submit for, like, this year, do you know?
I can get that information for you.
Okay, do you go for, like, federal funding ever? Have you ever submitted for federal funds?
I will get that information as to whether we, I know that we get grants from the state, uh, but I will get information on the source of our grants, whether it's federal, state, or county.
Okay, so you did get a federal grant in 2022, you got state and local government, uh, federal fiscal, uh, recovery funds, um, from the Department of the Treasury, so you have, but that's the only one that I've seen, um, and my question is primarily trying to understand, um, why we are talking about these financial management problems, but you're not taking advantage of any sort of, of federal funding, um, and that's something that concerns me, um, because that is a, a large pool of money, um, and I don't know if you have any thoughts about that, or whether you know anything about the, the federal grant process, um, and whether you anticipate looking for more, if that's a source that you frequently go to, because it sounds like it's not.
We are not going to look for grants for the sidewalk.
Not for the sidewalk, but if you are looking at grants, you're talking about how you have these financial problems with a lot of different budgets.
We don't have problems.
Like, capital, capital, you're saying you have all these expenditures with capital projects, but if you are increasing your revenue from other sources, i.e. federal grants, that reduces the burden across your general funds.
We do seek grants for many projects, I can find out further whether they're federal, state, or county, I am imagining it's from all sources, but I will find that out, we do seek grants, we are not in financial trouble, but this is taxpayer money, and we are careful with how we spend taxpayer money, and I just want to emphasize that it is not just the cost of trying to put a sidewalk, it is the safety, and we rely on our experts, and our experts say that it is not safe to put a sidewalk there. In terms of the guide rail, I, I guess maybe I wasn't that clear, it was to protect life that we want a guide rail there, the house has people, it has children, the reason we are seeking a guide rail there is to protect the lives of the people living in that house. In terms of, so we're not, it's not to protect the house, which is a good thing to protect, but the people in it are the priority for us. In terms of cars that miss the house and go over the embankment, it's not the cars that we're worried about, it's the people inside the cars, that could be a fatal accident. So we do prioritize the lives of our residents, as well as the lives of the people who are traveling on that road, even if they're speeding, we don't want them to get killed, so we are prioritizing life, um, and, and we do seek grants, uh, and we will always seek grants.
I'd love to know, like, the number, sorry, I'm not addressing it to you, but I would love to know the number, um, if you have that, if I, you need to submit another RTK, that's fine, um...
So, so what is it exactly you want to know, where we get grants and how many grants we get?
Yeah, like, how many grants your grant writer has submitted for this fiscal year, and perhaps last fiscal year, if I need to submit an RTK, I will, just let me know.
I can get, I can get that information for our monthly update, okay?
That would be great, thank you, um, and, um, yeah, I look forward to hearing more solutions on this, um, whether it's speed bumps, et cetera, and then also I think there's really great points that were raised about the guardrail potentially inhibiting pedestrian crossing, um, I think that you're saying it's not safe.
We don't want pedestrians walking there.
I know you don't want pedestrians crossing, but like, pedestrians are going to be crossing anyway, and that's something that I've reiterated over and over again, right? You know, I can't control what other people are doing, and you know that it's a problem now, right? Like, we have been coming to these council meetings for months, saying, this is a problem, like, cars are speeding, pedestrians are crossing, right? I can control what I, what I do, but there are still pedestrians, constituents who are taxpayers, who are paying into your general fund, who are potentially going to get hit by cars, that's all.
They should not be walking there, I, I'm, I'm sorry, but that's what it comes down to, you know?
Can I speak, I'm sorry?
All right, but a- anyone can speak, of, so, I'm sorry, go ahead, Kristen.
No, it's okay.
Did you want to say something?
Yeah, yeah, I do want to say something.
Oh, please, go ahead.
So, October 2023, I was sitting in the audience where you guys are, I a hundred percent can appreciate that the communication on this issue has not been clear, especially as an outsider, um, I don't think I really understood the situation until we really started talking about, like, the nitty-gritty of it in here, and I think the communic- the, the unclear community and spotty communication has made this issue even larger, um, and made it more, there be more emotions involved, um, and I appreciate also that the community is split, I know everyone wants to be able to walk to places, I mean, honestly, I can walk to a park from my neighborhood, I couldn't when I was little, I had to get into a little car and drive, I don't walk to that park because I have to listen to my son complain about how his legs hurt, because it's kind of far. Anyway, so I appreciate that, however, what I'm not, I think, number one, we are providing two solutions, and I don't think what we're saying here is those are the only things we're going to do, ever. I think the speed bumps are a great idea, if PennDOT would be, would allow us to do that. What I am failing to understand here is how a sidewalk is going to keep a pedestrian safe, because if people are speeding, it is not hard to jump a curb. I would tell my son never to walk on that street, ever, and putting in a sidewalk is almost an invitation for more people to do it, and then we put in the sidewalk, who takes on the liability when somebody does get hit? Because it is not keeping you safer.
That's what we're asking for, and we're asking for it to slow down and be a safe road.
Right, and, but I guess...
Mrs. Leonard, with all due respect, if that was...
With all due respect...
...months ago, then that could have been said, we could have had this discussion, instead, we've sat here...
We're going to need you to come up here if you're speaking, I'm sorry, it's for the recording, there needs to be a record.
And, Miss Leonard, with all due...
No, and I...
I understand where you're coming from, and I, and I know as a parent, you get what I'm saying.
A hundred percent.
And there's, I think, there's two significant problems, one, the communication on this process, it has been tantamount to malfeasance, because that, and that is why I'm sitting here, I'm frustrated, because yet again, on a Tuesday night, I'm here talking about something that we could have been work, having a discussion about, and working through possible solutions, instead of someone showing up and telling me, no, you can't do it, because some expert whose report will never let you read, has told you you can't, that we have a discussion about what's safe, what's not, whether it's the speed, or whether we need to get the sidewalk in first, but there's no faith, at least, I can't speak for you, but I have no faith that it took us eight months to get to a hard no, that now, we're going to pivot to a discussion where we get through to productive solutions.
I agree, I agree, it's taken too much push from you to get clear communication.
And so that's why I'm asking for a show, right, a show of good faith, saying, hey, listen, I'm sorry, we drag, we dragged ass on this, it's been eight months, that's entirely too damn long, here's the report, uh, my apologies, that would be a really great step, to, like, so we can all come together as, like, members who all live in this community, right? We all want to work, I don't want to be up here yelling at anybody, like, I, I've been, I've been leading people in the, in the world, like, my entire adult life, trying to bring people together, but sometimes, people will not pay attention until you jump up and down and scream, until you show up month after month after month, saying, help me! So what we are saying is, help, please, help us, and, and I, we can have it, let's have it, oh, by the way, we could have a discussion, someplace it's not thirty people sitting in a room and microphones, like, maybe if we got more than one email response a month, we could go, hey, here's my concern with this, Nick, I hear where you're coming from, I think the sidewalk maybe has a concern, it's X, Y, and Z, there hasn't been any, there's been no discourse, no exchanging of ideas, no exchanging of information, and so, you're right, I, I am obviously frustrated, right, and it's not subtle, I get it, but understand that I am still hoping that you, Ms. Leonard, and the rest of council can help us get to a solution.
Well, I think that's what we're trying to do now, again, I, I totally understand your frustration, I have been advocating for better communication about this issue, hopefully now we can move forward, but emails back and forth, I, I don't know how much of that, that can happen, because we're required to have a public discussion about these things, we can't correspond back and forth about an issue that we're going to make decisions on.
Okay, but again, communicating that, instead of saying, but, oh, by the way, I was...
No, 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 I agree, I agree.
And I was told that there was going to be a discussion about the proposal tonight, how can we possibly have a discussion if you haven't even shown me the information?
Right.
You, no, that wasn't a discussion, that was, hey, I'm mom, I'm dad, no kid, it's not happening, dad says, so dad go, that, that's what goes, and so, and that's not, that's not, that doesn't feel good, and it doesn't feel like we're in, we're on the same team.
Right, and I understand your, like, lack of trust because of this whole process.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I would just like to add on, I mean, to sort of react to what Kristen said, sir, and what you've shared, I, I think, I mean, I'm hoping that we can find collectively, find a way forward, right, because there's, there's two things here, I, I, and we, we all understand your frustration, and I think we have acknowledged that in terms of communication solution, like, we haven't been as, um, thorough communicating as we should, and it's not, not because we were looking to hide anything or didn't want to share information, but we probably could have provided more frequent, more thorough updates, I think we've acknowledged that, but there are two parts to this, one, we can debate and, um, sort of challenge the decision that's been made, which is part one, or, maybe, and/or, we could look at what we do going forward, because I think we are all open to the prospect of looking for solutions going forward. Speed bumps? Maybe, wow, so if it's a new day around looking at speed bumps, I don't think any of us would say, don't look at speed bumps, I think that would be an open conversation. So, I, I mean, I'm hopeful, I guess, that, I mean, you certainly have, if you've shared a right to know request, you certainly have a right to see information, but we can debate how we got where we are, or maybe we could spend more of our time, energy, and effort looking at how we can go forward together, right? Maybe there are some solutions we could look at together, and we are open to that, I mean, I don't want to speak for the entire council, but generally, we are a pretty collaborative, cooperative group, right? And we are looking for solutions, if it's speed bumps, or guardrails, or there's other ways to, to look at this. Agreed. But I'm just not sure that debating the how we got here is the best use of our collective time, but I, I, I validate your need to air your frustration and seek information, but I hope we could spend more effort working about a, working toward a solution, another solution, that's not a sidewalk.
Hi, Genevieve Bolin, same hood, Fulton Street, um, on the topic of solutions, I think that to open the conversation, again, had this been how it was approached in the beginning, I don't think we'd be here right now, but, and there would be a lot more trust and belief in the system, um, with that being said, it's not only cliffs, it's not only that three stop signs there, right in front of the new apartments, um, West Elm, the West Elm Apartments, I watched a woman that was getting hit by a car two days ago, someone was flying around the curb, past Light Street, right in front of those new apartments, and she screamed, like, in fear, and this is a regular occurrence, so the speed has to come down, that's not, that's not, bringing the speed down is not a solution, that's what it should be, like, that should just be baseline, that speed should not, people should not be flying sixty miles an hour through that neighborhood during rush hour, there are kids walking up and down that street, I get it's not safe, it's not safe, it's not safe, you can say it until you're blue in the face, it's not safe, but people are going to continue to do it, and if you keep infusing the neighborhood with more and more apartments, and approving more and more apartments in that neighborhood, and splitting up single-family homes into more and more apartments, there will be more people in that neighborhood using that street to cross paths, so with that being said, again, solutions, you need to be able to see across the street, all that brush and debris should be cleared from the street, those, on either side, whether it's PennDOTs, Connetown, Concha Hawkins, Plymouth Town, whoever's it is, should be clear, at the very least, you assume no liability in just cleaning up, and, and giving people a better view to see what they're crossing into, bring the speed down, clear the view for everybody, if the guardrails are up, at least consider when you're putting in the guardrails, what that does for all of the pedestrians that cross that street every day, that you will not get to stop crossing that street every day, that has to be consideration, not blocking them further, because truly, if there was just a way to have a clear path on that far side where the house is that we care more about than the couple hundred people that live in the neighborhood, if there was a clear way...
We care about the people in the house, just, I, I just keep having to repeat, we care about the people in that house.
I know, I care about them too, it's two children, they just adopted a little beagle dog, and it's a beautiful little family, I know that, I live in the neighborhood and I see them every day, I'm glad you care about them, but I also care about everyone else that lives in the neighborhood, I was there the night that car flew into the house, I've seen all of this happen, and I see it happen every single day, so, again, to the point of solutions, the speed has to, I hear people drag racing that street at night with my window, drag racing, they are driving to Isla Fiat, between Connetown and Norristown, that street that they put in, where they just put that stop sign, there are donuts in the street, I can hear them drag racing from my bedroom, every night, like, the speed in this area is obscene and beyond dangerous, and has to come down, and I very much appreciate the police presence, I'm so grateful for it, and I don't want to sound like, get the police out here, that's the solution, but it is a terrifying, massive problem, people do not respect that stop sign, whether it should or shouldn't be there is a different argument, it should be there at the very least, but it, the speed is terrifying, so as far as solution go for walking either side, can we at least get the brush and debris cleared, I think that would be a show of good faith on your end, and going from there, at least taking the pedestrians into consideration, um, in installing the guardrail.
So, where exactly are the, are the, um, the weed brush and debris problems, can you just let me know, like, between what blocks in Plymouth that we can...
The underpass.
Oh, at the underpass?
Yeah.
So, okay, so there's brush, oh, like, on either side of the...
Literally, last time, I told you there was, there's trash, people are throwing trash other winters, there's glass bottles, it's covered in litter and garbage and debris, on both sides, buckets, it's like construction debris.
And I just want to say, I...
Okay, well, we did just one minute, okay, well, let's let her finish, and then you can add to that.
He cleans it up, I'll, I'll say it.
So, we can look into, um, PennDOT's obligation to keep that, to keep that clear, and yes, thank you for weed whacking that area, but I, I think that's a PennDOT responsibility, but we can look into having...
I feel like that's something you should know, and that's not a question you should be asking me.
Brought to my attention tonight, that gentleman brought to my attention tonight, we are going to look into having that brush and debris cleared, okay?
Yes, thank you.
I'm not, I, I do know, but now I know it's a problem going forward...
You knew it was a problem last time.
We can look, going forward, look into having that cleared, and kept cleared, for visibility, and, um, are you saying you don't want a guide rail put in front of that house?
No, I'm saying that the guide rail, when it goes into place, should take pedestrians crossing the street into consideration, it shouldn't, it was, like you were mentioning earlier, it shouldn't impede pedestrians' ability, the only safe place to cross, because the brush stops you, on the side where the parking is, it stop, you literally have to cross, and if a guide rail is installed, I'm blocked off here, my only way is to cross the street, and now I have to jump a guide rail with two dogs and a stroller and five kids, that's not... and now I have to jump a guide rail with two dogs and a stroller and five kids. That's not going to happen. So I think it has to be understood that that guide rail is not going to block the only remaining safe way to get to the rest of town.
So you're walking on the north side and then crossing, or what are you doing?
Do you want me to draw a picture?
You're walking on your side of the street? You're walking on the north side?
Start on the side with the parking spaces, and then you cross onto the other side where the steel mill parking lot is.
Correct. Yeah, but, yeah.
So you're crossing, like, in the middle of the block there, right after the underpass?
Uh, in the underpass.
In the underpass, okay.
It's the, oh, it's, it's, it's the only way to see traffic, you can't even cross at the stop sign, because first off, people don't stop at the stop sign anyway. Second off, it's the only way to see the traffic coming around that curb. So if I'm crossing at the stop sign, I'm at more risk than I am crossing in the underpass. It's the only way I can see what's coming around the bend at sixty miles an hour.
So you're not even using the south side where we looked at the sidewalk?
But she, when, when she gets under the underpass, she moves from the north side to the south side.
Right.
Literally where the car flew into the house, like, that is where I would be crossing the street.
So if I'm, if I'm hearing correctly, when you're talking about the guardrail, you don't want it extending all the way from the house, all the way up to the steel mill parking lot, you don't want it under the underpass.
You don't want a guide rail under the underpass?
Oh, Jesus, Mary, God. Because the dirt in the underpass, right now, just to paint a picture, for anyone who might struggle to visualize this, it essentially serves as a pseudo sidewalk. The dirt is our pseudo sidewalk. If it wasn't weed whacked, we wouldn't be able to walk through it, which Pendot doesn't take care of it. And in certain seasons, the brush is too high, so you have to walk in the street. I have to walk in the street in most seasons. If that is maintained, again, dirt serves as a pseudo sidewalk, because so many people are crossing there anyway, it gets pat down. That kind of is our, that's the only way to walk there. So if a guide rail is blocking that path, so it's all, if it's closer to the street than it is to the bridge and protecting that house, now, now we're, we're coming back way more mad. Because now it's like, now I'm literally forced to walk in the street, no matter what, no matter what side. So I think the consideration, that what needs to happen is that guide rail would need to be put close, on the close side of the house, and allow that dirt space that we treat as a sidewalk to remain. Does that make sense?
Okay, so I have to, like I said, I have to look, I don't know where the guide rail's going, I know that the plan's already been submitted to Pendot, and we'll have to look and see where they propose to put that. But I, my, I, I know that the guide rail was to protect that house, because that resident came here and was concerned, obviously.
I would be, yeah, I'd be concerned if I lived there too.
And so that's why we looked into having a guide rail, uh, you know, Pendot to put in a guide rail. I don't know that it would extend under the whole underpass, that's not, I mean, we're protecting the house, not the underpass. So, uh, I'll find out where, where the guide rail is going, because I haven't seen that plan.
Okay, all right, that was all. So, again, open to solutions, it's just, even if they're small, just one step at a time is more helpful than, no, this is not happening.
And the, um, none of those apartments are in Plymouth Township, so that's not-
No, I'm talking about the speed, I'm not talking about the apartments. Like, you, the things you say, like, in response to the things that concerned citizens are saying, is like, so inflammatory, and I don't think you recognize that, but like, you saying last, get in your car, drive your car, put your dogs in the car, that, or that's not our responsibility, or that's there and not here, it's like, it's placing blame. And I, I want to come back to the solu, like, solution-oriented, we're on the same team here. And I think before you make statements like that, is to just consider how they're going to land. Do you know what I'm saying? Okay, okay, thank you.
Joanna Barr, again. I just want to clarify that someone from council is going to approach Pendot about clearing the, the brush in, up the embankment. It's, but a tree broke, and there was a huge branch blocking three parking spots and going into the underpass for a good six months. And are you the one that cleared it?
I didn't clear that, but I cleared the other side.
I mean, it was, I mean, literally, a tree, a huge tree branch was there. And, and, like, none, I couldn't drag it. Okay, so I just want to clarify that someone's going to approach-
Yeah, like I said, I have to look into the ownership of that area, and where Pendot's responsible, where Pendot owns it, it's in their right of way. We'll contact Pendot about cleaning it, the, all the trash, broken stuff, and the brush. And, um, I think when emergency things come up, like, you know, a storm and, and a branch falls, you know, we, we have to let whoever's responsible come, you know, clear the road. So we, we will look into that, and I don't know, like, I honestly don't know who owns those parking spaces. You tell me it's Pendot, and so we'll look into that, and if it's Pendot, we'll look into-
Right, but wouldn't they be responsible for the embankment that goes up to the highway? Or along the highway?
I don't know. I mean, I'll find out if that's private property or Pendot property. If it's Pendot property, they, you know, they have to clean it up, and if it's private property, the private property owner has to keep it clear.
Right. Okay.
Find out who owns what, and, uh, and follow up on who's responsible to, whoever, whoever owns it is responsible to keep it clean. And whatever influence we have over Pendot, we will exert.
Okay, thank you.
And we have influence over property owners, so that we can definitely do.
Okay. And I just want to, um, say, saying, "Don't walk there," is coming from a place of privilege. There are people that live in the neighborhood that don't have cars. You will see people walking, carrying grocery bags, or CVS bags, or whatever. They walk all the way from Concha Hawkins to Fulton Street. So to say, "Don't," you know, not everyone can afford to Uber to the grocery store.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you for letting me know.
Okay, thank you.
Dan Gallagher, 527 Old Elm Street. I'm going to thank everybody, council, and everybody that comes from Cuddytown to keep this going. It's a shame our forefathers left us with this issue, uh, but we're here now, you're here now, so hopefully we can get something going. And, uh, tonight I called the hotline, I talked to Stephanie. There is a light out on Old Elm and Light Street. If anybody knows anybody from Pico, or maybe we can get someone down there before Halloween for the kids. Thank you so much.
Okay, so the corner of Old Elm-
I have the pole number, but I gave it to Stephanie on her hotline, so.
Oh, okay, so that's already in the, in the hopper, okay.
So, that's all I have, but thanks for what you're doing, and hopefully we can figure this out. And I believe, and I know there's some aerial photos back from before the Blue Route was in, that showed sidewalks all the way through, and I'm going to see if I can get copies of them. Now, what happens if that's true? Because there was homes under that Blue Route that were taken away. And I know there's a photo, I just don't remember where it is, but it's in one of the businesses on Concha Hawkins Road. Might be Maximum Auto, I don't know, but it shows aerial photos of all that area. Just because it wasn't there then, or was there then, it's not here now, there's a lot of new people coming in the neighborhood. I've been there thirty-eight years, well, we have, sorry, Pat, but, uh, um-
So you're someone who predates the Blue Route, you saw your community cut in half.
And I know what you're saying, and nobody, it's going to be very hard to replace something that was there and it's not there anymore, because it's not enough room, I get it. But I see all these people walking, everybody walks here, a lot of people walk on that route. So, hopefully we can figure it out.
Okay, and we, and we will be cognizant that that guide rail doesn't present a pedestrian-
Because I'm, I go that way sometimes on my bicycle, you know, because I work up there. And, uh, that's the only way you can do it, you gotta come down one side, you gotta cross over to the other side. Then I gotta cross again to get on Old Elm, you know, so, yeah, it is an issue.
You cross under the underpass, is that where you, because of the sightlines?
Yeah, just like she was talking, you walk down, because there's a, it's wide enough, but it's not a sidewalk. But then you can only cross there, because that's the only kind of straightest part of the road you can see coming.
Okay.
And then, once you cross there, if that guardrail's more to the street, right, then it blocks us. If it's closer back to where the Chain Lake fence, fence is, I think that would be better, I think that's what you're saying. So if it's where Chain Lake fence, fence is, I think we'd be good, for now. And no one will know diff, any different than it what it is now.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I didn't realize we could see what streetlights are out. There's a street-
Always you can call the township about a streetlight being out, and it gets in the queue to be replaced, so.
Okay, there's a streetlight out on Fulton Street, and right when it turns, like, it'll flash out, and it stays out for hours, and then it flashes back on, and it flashes back out.
Okay, so this is a light, I mean, a Fulton in what?
Fulton Street. From- Right on the corner of Fulton Street.
Front of where?
Right up on the 626 Fulton Street.
Oh, okay, thank you. So 626 Fulton Street light, okay.
And then, I just had, and this is going to be bothering me if I don't ask it right now, when the steel mill was sold to Cliffs, was there any consideration to say, "Cliffs can only buy it if they put in a sidewalk"? Was that even discussed? Like, a gate, a little ma, more, make it safer, like, because I know in, in, uh, Norristown, and East Norriton, when people purchase houses, they make residents fix or put in sidewalks that are missing. So was that conversation brought up at all before they approved the purchase, the township approved the purchase?
Under our ordinance, sidewalks have to be put in when a property is redeveloped. So if at some, I mean, I-
Did they not, like, put money and redevelop that steel mill to make it operational after it was shut down?
I don't know if, if that qualified as the type of redevelopment that would require sidewalks, I, I just don't have the answer to that. But I do know that, for example, if that steel mill is ever sold and it turns into something else, they would be required to have sidewalks, because that's in our ordinance, that when a property is torn down and redeveloped, sidewalks have to go in, residential or commercial.
If they're going through the land development process?
Yes.
If, if it's the current use, that would, like, you're part of the, they're going through land development to, to change or demolish and rebuild, and they go through the approval process, sidewalks would be, you know, one of the, what?
Okay, but only if it was redeveloped, not when it changes hands?
Correct.
Okay. And there was no flex or anything the township could have done to insist that they put something safer so pedestrians can walk across that opening where the steel trucks, trucks go through? It, I mean, isn't that something that the township can say, "Hey, that's unsafe, you need to make it safer," because trucks are coming in and out of there? Is that nothing, I mean, isn't that the town, in the township's, uh, ability to tell them they have to make that intersection safer? If, if we all agree, especially you, that that is unsafe, that entrance?
Without knowing when that transaction occurred, or when you put the sidewalk, or was it at the time?
Well, I'm not even talking about the sidewalk, I'm just talking about the entrance and the exit of that for the steel trucks, and you said that's not safe. So when the township-
That's our engineer said that, right.
So wouldn't the township tell Cliffs that, "Hey, you have to make that safer," and it wouldn't cost the township anything?
I don't know if we have the statutory authority to make them do that.
But you can ask, right, you can ask as representatives of the township, like, "Hey, Cliffs, you are one of our residents, you are also a vital member of this community, it would be super nice if you put in a gate, and this was sensors, or some, or a stop sign, something, because Cliffs, with a national presence, certainly doesn't want one of their drivers running over us either." Like, this is, and this is the frustration, is the, no, not, no, but, we haven't, and I, Ms. Visio, I understand you communicated this, and I- I appreciate, I, I'm sorry, I, I appreciate this has been communicated, both you and Ms. Leonard have both said, listen, we want to get to, like, solutions. But I think that's the frustration, is that this is the first time we're hearing it. So what we're hoping is that going forward, no, maybe, I get it, right, the law doesn't allow you, you don't, can't just imminent domain, a gate onto their property, you can try, you got it. But I email Cliffs, and they go, whatever, disappears into ether.
And don't-
The council emailed them, or reaches out to Greg Scott and says, "Hey, local rep, would you please advocate for us?" Greg Scott's going to pick up your emails before he picks up mine, right? And collectively, now Cliffs is doing something on their own that doesn't cost us anything. If we're working together, and our council's advocating for their community.
My understanding is that people who are walking on, from Fulton Street, are walking up the north side, and then crossing to the south side after Cliffs-
We're in hiding the answer, because there's no answer there. But if there's a sidewalk, and a crosswalk, or something else there, there's, there's, so Ms. Visio, there's a million ways to skin this cat and solve this problem. This is the first time I've heard somebody from the council say, "No, buts." So we need to figure out what's on the other side of that but, and part of that is agreeing conversations about what the pathway, and if there's guardrails put up, different types of guardrails, that's an engineering question. Whether or not Cliffs, it, it joins us in this fight to make it safe for the neighborhood, that's a different question. But we have to have these discussions, not just say, "No," not just say, "No, we can't make them." I get it, government, iron fist of the government, can't make everyone do everything, thank God. But you can influence, you said a moment ago, you can influence members of this community. Well, Cliffs is certainly a member of this community, and certainly-
So you're asking us to ask Cliffs to put in an automated gate to stop their trucks?
No, no, that's not what I'm asking.
What, I'm, then I misunderstood, what, what are you asking about the driveway?
With all due respect, I can see it on the faces of every other member of this council, that they understand what I am trying to communicate. I, I don't have the, every single answer, every I and T dotted, because we've gotten so many no's, and the, the process up to this point has been okay. Here's the short answer, we want a safe way for me, my family, him, his family, then their families, her, all of us to be able to walk back and forth from Conneton to Concha Hawkins, safely, full stop. Whether that's sidewalks, or speed bumps, or guardrails, I quite frankly, don't actually care. And I don't think anybody else does either. Just help us get to a solution.
End of the day, you're going to walk there no matter what we do.
Yes.
And, and you don't think you're going to get sued because there's no sidewalk? I mean, that seems just ridiculous to me. If somebody gets hit because there's no sidewalk, wouldn't that be more of a reason to sue the township? And then, also with the ordinance, doesn't this council create the ordinances? So why are we saying we don't have an ordinance on file, when we could do something about that? Isn't that what this council's for?
Any new ordinance, pressure active?
No, I, I get that, but if there's an ordinance there, and then if it sells again, and if we can't do anything between now and when it sells again, then it'll be active, and the steel mill will get sold again, just a matter of when.
Hey.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Any comments on any other subjects? All right, hearing none, the meeting is adjourned, thank you.